Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Counsel, Agency Member Francisco Hachkis.
Here.
House.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
Self.
Here.
White.
Mayor, Chair Schneider.
Here.
Item 1, Proclamation declaring March 7, 2011 as Arbor Day.
Have members of Santa Barbara Beautiful here? Yeah, come on up. Did you want to come up too, Jaclyn, or?
No, no, no.
Okay. We don't have posters this time, but that's okay. Oh, come on up. I have my schedule for Adam's School coming up. They always do such a big thing, so thank you for your work on this. Arbor Day observances were held in California during the week of March 7, 2011, and in the city of Santa Barbara throughout the month of March. The city of Santa Barbara has been designated a Tree City USA for 31 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And the city of Santa Barbara is proud of its public open space, approximately 40,000 park and street trees, and recognizes the importance of professional tree care and annual tree planting programs that create a more livable community. And Arbor Day observances were held at six local grade school campuses. This spring, Santa Barbara is celebrating 109 years of city parks, providing stewardship of trees, parks, and open space. And the city acknowledges Santa Barbara Beautiful's significant contribution to our urban forest through the planting of over 11,000 street trees in the past 44 years. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim March 7, we're a little late here, but that's okay, March 7, 2011, as Arbor Day in the city of Santa Barbara, and recognize the value that trees provide in enhancing the quality of our lives. And thank you each and every year for your volunteer work, your donations, and all the work you do at Santa Barbara Beautiful. So thank you very much. If you'd like to say something, please.
I want to recognize Karen Crispin, who will be leading a lot of the activities that Santa Barbara Beautiful is doing in conjunction with Earth Day, and Jaclyn Dyson, who does very much for us to promote Santa Barbara Beautiful. Mayor Schneider, members of counsel, I'm Ginny Brush, and I serve currently as the president of the Board of Santa Barbara Beautiful. The first Arbor Day was held in Nebraska in April 10 in 1872. It was established through the efforts of J. Sterling Morton, who helped Nebraska change from a treeless plain to the Nebraska we know today. Santa Barbara, at the same time, was also treeless. Through the efforts of plantsmen like Joseph Sexton, Francesco Franceschi, A. Boyd Duremus, and E. O. Orpitt, Santa Barbara has a legacy of illustrious parks and tree-lined streets we appreciate and enjoy today. In Santa Barbara, we've celebrated Arbor Day since, every year since 1980, which helped us remain Tree City USA. In an effort to continue this commitment, we celebrate at local elementary schools by planting trees. This is done through the cooperation of Santa Barbara Beautiful, the city of Santa Barbara, and local elementary schools. As Mayor Schneider mentioned, there are six schools taking part in these kinds of activities in the next weeks and month. Santa Barbara Beautiful is an organization of volunteers that are dedicated to beautifying our area in a variety of ways, not only working independently, but also cooperating with city departments, neighborhood associations, and other agencies. Formed in 1965 by concerned civic leaders, Santa Barbara Beautiful is a nonpolitical, nonprofit, tax-exempt corporation. This organization provides funds to help citizens, businesses, and community groups beautify Santa Barbara through landscaping and art, and recognizes outstanding contributions in those areas each year through its annual awards presentations that take place in September. Again, thank you for recognizing the work of Santa Barbara Beautiful.
Thank you. And I see our park staff, too, dealing with a whole lot of, taking care of those 44,000 trees, or whatever, however many. No, 44 years, 11,000 trees, a lot of trees.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand. I knew there was a forty in there somewhere. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay, the public comment. We have a few speakers here. We'll start with Norman Wicks, to be followed by Wayne Scholes. Mr. Wicks, there's a microphone right there if you want to press the button.
Yes.
With the overhead?
Presenting.
Okay. Someone could help, Mr. Wicks, he wants to put an overhead over.
I will leave copies for all of the members to look at.
Okay. If you could press the button on the mic and make sure that green light is on, and I'll tell you when you're close to your two minutes, okay?
Hello?
Yep, that does it.
Hello?
Go right ahead.
So, uh...
Yeah, hold on, we'll get...
Hold on, Mr. Wicks, let me get the thing overhead up for you.
Okay, Mr. Wicks, you have two minutes.
This is Norman Wicks, this is my son Norman Wicks Jr., and what we have here...
Turn on that light right there. The light was off.
There you go. What we have here is ADA regulation parking for the disabled. Norman, let's step out of the way. And you can see the dimensions and how it looks, and so forth and so on. I've been having a terrible time with the city housing authority trying to get them to implement this parking for myself and the other tenants that are there. There are three tenants that are sharing one space. And I have to fight with other tenants to get space to park because I have a van, and I have a ramp, and I have this big wheelchair that the taxpayers paid $30,000 for that I don't get to use much because of the parking situation. If you'll turn the page, Norman, and I'll show you what the parking looks like. This is what the parking looks like, okay? There is a pedestrian right-of-way, and you can't see the blue lines because they're faded out, but there's blue lines that go all the way to that other vehicle. There are no posts in the ground that designate it as disability parking. There is no van-accessible parking post in the ground with a sign, and I am required to turn my vehicle around and back it in in order to access the parking space.
You have 30 more seconds.
And try as I may, the housing authority has just ignored my efforts to try and get them to comply with ADA regulations. I have several copies of this that I'm going to leave behind so that the members of the council and the mayor might look at it, and hopefully something can be done because disabled people are kind of at a disadvantage as it is, without making it any worse. And where it says pedestrian walkway right there, that's actually where people get out of their vehicles and they walk through there constantly. So what happens is...
You need to wind up, Mr. Wicks.
...wheelchair ramp, people are walking over the top of it so they can have access to the walkway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Francisco.
Just a quick question. Which housing authority property is this?
This is 3931 Villa Diego.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Do you need these copies here?
Sure.
So that the council members and the mayor...
Our clerk will pick them up and forward them, and actually, we have members from the housing authority here who can review it.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Wayne Scholes, will be followed by Jeff Bard, and the final speaker will be Jeffrey Wood.
I'm here to remind the public that about seven years ago, I spoke here about my disapproval with these low-interest loans to some of the highest-paid employees of Santa Barbara who were hired from out of town when we had plenty of qualified people in positions that could have been promoted in town. At that time, I called them bonuses, signing bonuses, and I still believe that. And one of the things that I pointed out was Cam Sanchez's $500,000 loan at 2%, which is 1/8 of the total amount of money that was supposed to be loaned out. And then shortly after, I was arrested on false charges by the chief of police. Robert Arringer did an article in the Santa Barbara News Press that stated that the chief of police owned four properties. And I think in that same article, our city administrator admitted that he never did any investigation to determine if Mr. Sanchez needed the money for a home or not. Then in an article in the paper the other day, it states that after five years of employment, the city forgives 25% of the loan that they gave to these employees, and after 10 years, it's 50%. That means Chief Sanchez was forgiven $250,000 of city money. That's ridiculous. The other point I want to make when I'm here is that last week when I spoke, there were four police officers here, and I want the public to listen to this. Four police officers were here. The officer sitting to my right, where this man is sitting, was wearing a flak jacket. And now we find out the reason is, is because of the fear of the city council and the city for retaliation about the gang injunction. You're either worried about gang supporters or gang members creating a disturbance in this room. There's normally only one police officer here. And that's because city hall was tagged, and the city tried to cover it up real fast. And anybody that goes onto the media, like the chief of police did, and says this is one of the safest cities in town...
Time's up, Mr. Scholes.
And anybody that works for the city, that's, I'd like the same amount of time as the last speaker, Mayor, anybody that works for the city that says the crime has gone down steadily for 20 years should be fired immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Bard will be followed by Jeffrey Wood.
Is this, um...
Can you, it needs to be...
If you can handle that, I'll start talking so we can get the clock rolling. I would like to broadcast that if at all possible. Madam Mayor and members of council, good afternoon. My name is Jeffrey Bard. I am a Democrat, and I define myself as a radical centrist. I've been studying the conservative movement in the United States because I believe that now that we're in Libya and in other theaters as a nation, we do need to pull together and reach across the aisle despite whatever water may be under the bridge. And to that purpose, I'm studying George Nash and other writers, and I'm learning about people like Peter Varek, who were pretty much Edmund Burke conservatives, and people like Arthur Schlesinger, who was a liberal who advocated working with conservatives on common ground. And I think that's a very fertile field of inquiry. And to that end, as a former member of the Oil, Chemical, and Atomic Workers Union, I'm very concerned with the Fukushima Daiichi disaster. And I have to say that both Representative Lois Capps and Representative Sam Blakesley have respectively Democrat and Republican, been doing excellent work in this field. Unfortunately, in the amount of time since the Fukushima Daiichi disaster began unfolding, and I don't in any way want to minimize the radioactivity hazard, however, a far greater number of people...
Excuse me, please, just, I don't usually like props.
This is a pack of cigarettes. More people have been killed by cigarettes in the past two weeks than have been killed by all the radiation of all the nuclear reactors in the whole world. I've been canvassing the homeless community, and I'm proud to say there are people who are dealing with homelessness, who have quit smoking, and who are trying to quit. To be continued. Thank you.
Jeffrey Wood, and then the final speaker will be Kate Smith.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'm here today to speak on something as random as a Facebook post. The Milpus Action Committee found a photograph, or photographed some tagging that happened on a bridge here where it indicated kill cops. I'm disturbed, one, that our community has individuals that thinks that it's okay to kill cops, or even tag it, or mention it, or think that it's funny. But at the same time, the police department here is out of control. You can look at the financial statements that you guys are going to be talking about today and see that you have to get out of the money you're spending, what you pay into it. And the cops here do not, they're not adequately handling the situation. And from the ground level, as a homeless individual who is, would be directly on the streets as of Friday, know that the city is not doing anything to correct any of the lower-level problems. You're too focused on the high-level problems of selling newspapers for people for political reasons, or, that's not solving any problems in making this community safer. The Milpus Action Committee is trying to do what they can, but without guidance from the people at the top, it's pointless. It's, there's no point. If you don't stop at the top, the way the public views this community, you're never going to get the lower end of it to respect anything about this community. Throwing away this kind of money and then complaining about housing authorities' ability to house people, who hands out coupons deciding on who is qualified to be living in Santa Barbara? Who does that? Human reputation. They'll all have one. Thank you.
Final speaker will be Kate Smith. Ms. Smith?
Mayor Schneider, members of the Santa Barbara City Council, today is the one-year anniversary of the Santa Barbara County government filing for restraining orders against me. "I am not a violent person. I'm not a danger to anyone," said the number-one advocate in the state. She's not a danger to anyone unless it's possible to talk a person to death, in which case, we're all in trouble. "I am not a threat to your lives. I am a very real threat to your livelihood." What are the words that will synapse our society into awareness? What are the actions we, the people, can do to expose deep-seated and widespread school and government corruption? Until we stop the education-politico-industrial complex from operating, there is no hope for our democracy. There are articles, actions, online. But as you just heard from Jeff Wood, Santa Barbara is the perfect storm of injustice. Taxpayer-paid lawyers collude, conspire, and cover up wrongdoing. I am your Katrina. I have suffered the slings and arrows of outrageous fortune. I'm a well-known victim of legal abuse. And now, calling into a world stage, I just filed my last and most potent small claims court case against Santa Barbara County Council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We're on to the consent calendar. I believe you have some items to read, Susan, or one item.
Item 6, Adoption of Resolution of House Health and Safety Code Section 33445 Findings for Grant Funding Regarding the Acquisition of 1020 Placido Avenue, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving and adopting the findings required by Health and Safety Code Section 33445 for the grant funding for the acquisition of 1020 Placido Avenue located in the Central City Redevelopment Project area by the Housing Authority of the city of Santa Barbara and authorizing certain other actions.
Okay, without further objection, we'll waive further reading. We actually need to pull that item off the consent calendar. Mr. Rouse, you needed to abstain from that, and you want to state your...
That's correct, Madam Mayor. I will abstain. My wife is a board member of CADA, who is the proposed operator of that property.
Okay. We do have a public comment speaker on this item. Mr. Rouse, I believe since we're on consent, you can stay, and we'll just, usually if it's a major item, you leave the room, but for the public comment, I don't think that's a problem unless my city attorney tells me otherwise. But Mr. Heaton, if you'd like to come up, and then Ms. Self also has her light on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jim Heaton. I spoke at the last hearing and have been, I'm a neighbor to this project. I came here today partly to find out really what was done in response to the council's direction last time to revise the findings and revisit the findings to make the resolution. I brought up a number of issues that I see. I did quite a bit of research and put a lot of time into trying to understand the intricacies of the code surrounding what's happening here with this grant. And I did receive an email just a few minutes before the meeting from city attorney saying that the findings could be made, so partly I was coming just because I hadn't been able to get a response from anyone as to what was being, you know, what was being reviewed or what was being changed. So I'm interested to know what was. I did see some minor rewording of one finding, and perhaps that's enough. To me, it's something that's different. It's something that's new, but just because we didn't always do it that way doesn't mean we shouldn't now. I'm certainly a believer in that, and I heard someone in the council at the last hearing say, you know, this is 21st century, we need to look at blight the way, you know, look at the issues we have currently. And, you know, I think if you're making this decision to make those findings and to make that leap forward, I mean, you could be leading the effort. And I just want to see solid support for that because I think that there's other jurisdictions and other redevelopment agencies and communities that could benefit from this type of forward thinking. So I'm not opposed to the project itself. I know that there's a need. I know that you all put a lot of time and thought into it, too. I just would like to know that it's well-supported and it's the right thing to do, given the code, government code and redevelopment law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Self?
I would also like to make a comment on item 12.
Okay, but we have item 6 up, and we have to vote on that separately anyway.
Right, I need to vote on that separate, yes, thank you.
So that was, okay. Anything else on item 6, Mr. House?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I appreciate the gentleman's comments, and I move item 6 on the consent calendar.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention.
And one no.
And one no. So five ayes, one no, one abstention. Okay, I want to take up item number 12. Ms. Self?
Yes, I don't know if this...
Actually, I'm sorry. Susan, could you read that so people know what we're talking about?
Declaration of firefighting equipment as surplus and donation of set equipment.
Thank you. And I see Fire Chief Dimizio was here. Is he still in the room? Yes, he's up here. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Self.
I brought this up to Mr. Armstrong, and I don't know that this can be done, but many of our housing authority projects are put together for tax credits for people or tax deduction. And so I think, and I understand that we can't donate this used equipment to another fire department here, but it, would it be possible that someone would want to purchase this equipment for the tax write-off and then donate it to Mexico, where we would be getting the money for it, they would be getting the tax credit, and Mexico would still get the product? Again, I don't know that that's possible, but I see it happening in other realms, so...
Question. I don't see anyone from the Puerto Vallarta sister city group, but Mr. Chief Dimizio, do you have any comments to that effect about this particular item?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, I haven't heard of that kind of situation, and I would refer to the sister city folks themselves. If that was a kind of situation we could do, I would certainly pursue that, so...
I mean, not from them, but someone here in the states who could use the tax write-off like they do in promoting affordable housing. So they pay us for the tax write-off, they give the equipment to our sister city, and so every, it's a win-win-win. Maybe we could look into that for next time.
Armstrong?
And Madam Mayor, I'm not a tax expert, but I think because the tax rates are below, you know, if somebody's in a 40% tax rate, let's say they paid us $100 for it, they'd be able to write off $40, so it wouldn't make financial sense, I think, for someone to do that. The tax credits that people purchase for affordable housing projects is another whole specific area of tax law.
Right. No, this would not be a tax credit, which is 100%, not 400%. And so the, you know, if you spent $100, you'd get $40 back if, as a deduction, but I'm assuming that we have people with good tax accountants and good income and wouldn't mind helping the city and Mexico at the same time. Obviously, they're not going to want to use it, and I don't know the ramifications, but just in the future, maybe this could be income for us.
Do you need to vote on this separately, or?
Nope.
Okay. I will say, I did, I happened to have a conversation with the mayor of Puerto Vallarta recently, and they are very appreciative of this donation, and wanted to thank the city and also thank the Puerto Vallarta, Santa Barbara sister city group. And apparently, a lot of the firefighters there have to purchase their own uniforms, so if they don't have them available, can you imagine going into a burning building without this kind of equipment? So, and thanks to John Allman, who used to work in the city fire department, I think was the instigator behind all of this. So to thank everyone for their ingenuity, but I think in the future, that might be something to look at and see if there's an option there.
Is there accountant in the house?
Yeah, well, not this second, but, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
Yes, ma'am. I've moved motion, or items 2 through 17, except item 6, and with a comment to appreciate Paul Willis, who is about to be serving us as the city's poet laureate. And a wonderful position to have the city represented that way.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And he'll be here on April 12 as a ceremonial item. We'll give him the laurels and all that good stuff, and he'll recite a poem, I think, too, so... Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that passes. Okay, there was no finance or ordinance committee meeting, so we are up to item number 18.
Presentation from the Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Janega Dykes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kathy Janega Dykes. I'm president and CEO of the Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission, and I'm here today to present an overview of CVB programs, their respective results, and certainly the trends that we are seeing in the industry. This is going to be done in a video that is showcasing some of the highlights, and following this, I'll spend a few moments talking about where we're going in the next fiscal year. So let's begin with the video. the video. I realize that was a quick recap, so I'm happy to provide a copy of that video as well, too. But there you have it, the story about our programs and results generated from summer until now. This has definitely been a year or two years when we at the CBB have had to turn on a dime, where we've had to respond to the ongoing trends and, in fact, have had to change strategy multiple times over the couple of years to address those as well. So we've also had to recapture the summer visitor when in years past it was a given. We celebrated Santa Barbara's culinary scene and its 100 years of film history, garnered new friends through our social media platforms, and also created a new food and wine app, renovated an old visitors' guide, developed an innovative field guide for media. All impressive, but I think what's most important, all were effective as well. But truly, one of our highlights was the establishment of the South Coast Tourism Business Improvement District, which along with our current public funding, will give us enough marketing money to boost our message really to a level we've never been able to reach before. In the coming year, we're going to be leveraging all of these funds and putting them to work in ways that will make a significant increase in business and profits for the entire community. We will work to bring Santa Barbara to a whole new level of recognition. And fortunately, this new supplemental T-Bid income is really coming at the right time. Travelers are on the move again. In Santa Barbara, occupancy and tax collections have started to return to pre-recession highs. As you can see, we ended the year on a very positive note, and 2011 is starting very strong as well, too. For the last couple of months, we've been developing a strategic marketing plan for our new and expanding marketing efforts, really seeking input from our T-Bid partners. And this has been a really critical step for us, where we talked with them directly, we learned what their challenges are, and more importantly, we wanted to hear what their marketing priorities are as well, too. So we began the comprehensive process in January, and there were two steps to it. One was a survey that was sent to all of our lodging partners, and the second was a series of focus groups where we invited all hotel partners to participate. We held two focus groups in the city of Santa Barbara, one in Carpinteria and one in Goleta. And input from our lodging partners really found a consensus for, and this is kind of broad goals, but targeting both the leisure and the business traveler, understanding the importance of both audiences, increasing midweek off-season business, and really focusing on marketing efforts to really generate overnight hotel stays on the South Coast. Every program that we coordinate has to have a hotel overnight conversion. So with that direction, we again are planning our strategic marketing plan, and we have a draft that will be presented to two committees in mid-April. In this plan, we're going to focus on a couple of key objectives. Again, target visitors who can stay Sunday through Thursday, in particularly off-season, and really kind of focusing on the fourth quarter and the first quarter as well. Be on the hunt for new and unique partnerships. How can we leverage the Santa Barbara name, the brand, with other companies who have similar visions to take Santa Barbara to a whole different level? And it may be automobile companies. It may be other corporations. It could be other CBBS as well. We're going to continue to work with California Tourism to market to the lucrative foreign market. And in this case, right now, we have about 18% of our business mix is made up of international visitors. But with these new funds, we know that we can grow that about 2% at least. So we're going to be focusing on the UK market and also the Canadian market and the Australian market, which may be kind of surprising, but the airlift to Australia has continued to increase. And LA had just announced last year that the Australian market was their number-one inbound market. So we want to capitalize on what's happening down there, too. We're also going to begin aggressively marketing further afield. During the economic downturn, we really needed focus on Southern California in our backyard. But we really need to begin to focus on areas a little bit further, such as Arizona, Seattle, Portland, Texas, New York, and Chicago, where many of these visitors will visit Santa Barbara during the off-season. They will stay longer, and the spend is generally greater as well, too. And of course, we're going to continue to generate corporate and business travel. We're always mindful of the need to measure and track the return on investment of all of our marketing activities. Along with our current measurement, which we supply to you in a number of different formats, monthly reports, quarterly reports, and certainly our annual reports, we will continue to track the return on investment of each program initiated. And it's a process that we've already started. And we thought you'd be interested in learning about a new research project that we just launched last month. We're working with Destination Analyst, which is a research firm based in San Francisco that is conducting an in-depth baseline study of the return of investment of the CBB's website. Currently, all of our visitor inquiries are funneled to our website right now. So the study will cover the incremental visitor activity on the site and consequent return on investment generated to the city of Santa Barbara and to our T-Bid lodging partners, the demographic and psychographic profiles of website users, as well as the analysis of their travel intentions and behaviors, and then gauge user satisfaction of our website as well, too. So the study really includes a couple of different parts. First, a website intercept survey, and then a follow-up survey of people who visited Santa Barbara. So the first survey will intercept visitors as they enter the website, and will collect the information needed to later survey these visitors about their actual travel behavior and motivations. A second follow-up survey will be sent via an email at a point in time after that website user has identified that they would likely have visited Santa Barbara. So the two surveys combined will collect all data necessary for conversion analysis. And a final report will be presented to you in November. Another tool that we've begun to use is an online booking tool. And although we've worked with one before in the past, it was basically done with a third-party operator. For us, we needed to take our visitor directly to our lodging partners themselves. So we began to work with JackRabbit this year. And as the visitor starts to kind of gather information and look at hotels, they can go directly to the hotel's booking engines and book their stay to Santa Barbara, too. A few moments ago, I had mentioned partnerships and our goal to find new ones. And I also want to comment how essential our partnership with the city of Santa Barbara, you all are to us. Your input, comments, and guidance were extremely important as we, during our campaign to form the T-Bid. And I also want to acknowledge Jill Tora, who has an amazing amount of patience, because she was fantastic during this process, and of course, Mr. Armstrong as well, too. We're now embarking on a marketing effort, really using the combined funds that will make it a substantial economic impact, not only to the hospitality industry, but really to the community themselves, the entire community. And I think in the last two years, we never had realized how important tourism was to our community, too. So we're grateful for your backing and ongoing funding of our programs, something that will benefit all of us as we continue our collaboration in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to us, any questions or comments? Mr. Hotchkiss?
The surveys that you mentioned, Kathy--
Yes.
Is the first one surreptitious, if I can put it that way? And do we capture where somebody's coming from just because they plug into our sites? How does that work?
There, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, there are two different, a couple of processes. We can gather a little bit more information about the visitor, where they're located, what their travel intentions are, where they want to go, what are they doing while they're here as well, too. I think for us, the most important part is, we have, you know, we have a lot of visitors that come to our site, but we need to know how many of those visitors actually visit Santa Barbara after they visit and collect information from our site as well, too. So right now, the process just begun in early March, and we have probably about 400 surveys that have been collected thus far, which is a very, very strong start to the process.
Again, do people know that we're getting this information when they plug into our site?
Yes.
You mentioned that our TOT is coming back. What year are we approximately equal to now, do you know?
Armstrong?
2003?
2007.
Seven, thank you. You mentioned a food and wine app?
Mm-hmm.
How does that work, and what is it?
Councilmember Hotchkiss, you can download, it's called a sip and savor food app, and it showcases all of our restaurants and food and wine. And I'll actually send you all the links so that you can download it to your phones as well.
That's just a personal request. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the presentation. I thought I was in club council there for a while. That was kind of fun. And I appreciate your work, your cooperative work with the DO and with the chamber. I think that's really important. One particularly successful promotion, I think, in the off-season, because we do get people there in the summertime. Certainly, the film festival is an amazing event for town and the town's revenues. First of all, do you have any plans for any other types of promotions along those lines or events, anything being talked about for the off-season time? And then, secondly, are there any plans or any discussions about when our airport is completed, somehow parlaying that asset into our visitor profile?
Councilmember Schneider, Councilmember Rouse, yes, actually, there are two things. One was, we began, we've been working with the Santa Barbara International Film Festival for a number of years in terms of promoting the events. We recognize the importance of that festival to us, particularly, as you noted, during the off-season as well, too. And this year, we launched a new film, Food Feast program as well, too. So Film Feast, Food Feast, Film Sleeps as well, too. And that program actually generated some really strong interest. We will continue to take that program to a whole different level next year. So we also work with the film festival through our film commission, too, because we recognize that we have a number of different producers and directors that come in, and we use that opportunity to showcase Santa Barbara as certainly a location for future filming activity. And we also participate in a number of different sponsorships with the film festival, too. In terms of other off-season promotions, we actually hosted 24 More, which is a very successful off-season campaign last year, which showcased many of the values. So essentially, the focus was stay two or nights or three nights and get the fourth night free, and then showcasing the many activities that there were to do within those 24 hours, too. We do plan to actually launch a new promotion for the off-season campaign next year as well, too. And for us, generally, the off-season is considered November through March.
And the airport?
And the airport, actually, we work very closely with the airport as well, too. And we've been talking with Teri Gibson, who's the marketing director, on different things that we can coordinate with her as well, too. Teri serves on our board of directors, so provides us with updates about the airport. And then also, we will be working with some of the communities that our airport or airline service as well, too. For example, Denver is an important market, and we do have plans to go to Denver for a sales blitz and try to, you know, certainly solicit more business from Denver coming to this area.
Yeah, years ago, we were critical, back then, the CBB, because we thought we could leverage the Denver, and at that time, Dallas market more effectively than we did. And since we're going to have this amazing new airport, new facility, it seems like there'd be a natural tie-in with using those assets to help market Santa Barbara as a destination.
Yes. Councilwoman Rouse, it is, actually. And that's one of the reasons why we're going to be looking at marketing further afield as well, too. We had talked earlier about New York and Portland, and also Seattle is some important markets for us. So that's all part of working very closely with the airport, airport staff.
Mr. House?
Kathy, thank you for your, as usual, high-powered and quick-paced report. The American Riviera remains the theme, the basic construct?
Yes. Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we are still continuing to use American Riviera as our tagline.
Okay, very good. And getting good response to that as such. I'm sure you're checking in on that to be sure it still rings well.
We are. And in fact, actually, we have just hired a new ad agency, and our ad agency will be conducting a brand analysis. And part of that is just making sure that that tagline still resonates with our customers as well, too.
You know, it seems as if there's been a gentle shift in the wind locally here in terms of our understanding and appreciation of tourism, and that it's seen as a plus, an asset. And I think maybe that's in part due to the fact that so much of what brings somebody to Santa Barbara are things that we, as locals, really do appreciate already. The zoo, the Sea Center, the Maritime Museum, I made a little list here, the Art Museum, Natural History Museum, the History Museum, the events like Solstice and Fiesta and the Film Festival, and even the arts in the sense of the Granada, La Bero, and all the other galleries and things. So I guess my question goes to, how are you working to coordinate the efforts or to collaborate with these different, really intrinsic and authentic locally-serving destinations so that the visitors can appreciate them?
Many of our staff serve on different committees that are often working with each of these attractions as well, too. We recognize that, you know, these attractions are really the drivers, the tourism drivers. I mean, people stay in hotels, but they're coming here because of our activities as well, too. So, I mean, all of our marketing activities, our advertising programs really showcase the many activities there are to do, and it could be done through a number of different ways. It could be through our literature, and we produce three different visitor magazines right now. It could be through our advertisements. It could be through our social marketing programs. In fact, many of those attractions are highlighted through our Facebook outreach or Twitter outreach as well, too. So really, all of our attractions are truly the tourism drivers. They're showcased in everything that we do.
Now, I would make a little comment here to you, Kathy. I think CBB just happens to be one organization, the one organization, that all of those groups that I just mentioned and more would-- that I just mentioned and more would have that common, a true common interest with. And the degree to which you can convene them or to get them to work, get them together to begin to really collaborate among themselves, maybe more like you're, you're the convener, you're the, you provide the venue for that. There may be strengths in there and, and stories in there that could really enhance the message you're trying to get out. And so, I really want to be encouraging of that effort. I think you have a very vital and pivotal role in that.
Right. And we actually have a program that we're going to be starting soon for the summer season. Many of our attractions are offering some new family travel experiences as well, too. So, we've already initiated some discussions about ways that we can be that, that liaison, as you had just said, to promote family travel to Santa Barbara during the summer season.
That's beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss had another question.
Yeah, one more. Mr. Rouse brings up a good point about our airport. Are we doing anything at the airport itself with the CDB that sort of incorporates, I don't know if it's an electronic way of marketing, so when people come here, they, you know, are faced with all other choices? In the past, it was always a, a rack of pamphlets. That seems like last century somehow. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I think probably, Jim, you may be able to answer this. I know that we have talked about a couple of different ideas in terms of, you know, collateral distribution and things like that. And I believe that the airport will have some of those electronic screens as well, too, or?
I'm not sure. We can get back to that.
Okay.
We can have staff get back to us about that.
Madam Mayor, I can...
I'm sure there's something with the, at the baggage claim or rental car area or something like that.
I think I can help a little on that.
Mr. House?
Yeah, as, and you're the liaison now, I think, Mr. Hotchkiss, to the airport. As the liaison for the past few years in the planning process, yes, that kind of messaging is, is designed into the, into the project, and it's going to be active and appropriate, you know, for Santa Barbara scale. But it, that kind of message board was one of the things that was built into the project.
Great. Well, one of the huge advantages of that is you can change on a dime, you know, can instantly change things, so.
Right, right. Councilmember Hotchkiss, if I could just add one more thing. We recognize the importance of this airport to our community, and we are thrilled that this airport is being rebuilt, and the opportunities obviously are endless. And then, again, we are designing our marketing plan to try to generate as much traffic through that airport as well, too. And again, focusing on some of our, you know, markets that we currently service through our airlines, but others that also a little bit further afield as well, too, and, and just trying to generate more traffic for that airport.
Sure. Thank you very much.
It's not usual that we're happy when you say we're trying to generate more traffic, but when it comes to a website, that's a good thing. I'll just also add, I've noticed in the last few years, and I want to commend CDB and also with the Downtown Organization, the Chamber of Commerce, Santa Barbara Beautiful, how much you're, you're working together on common events, whether it's Epicure, you know, in the downtown, that was a big project with CDB and the Downtown Organization, Chamber of Commerce being part of that. I mean, I'm seeing more of that over the last few years, and I appreciate that. And it probably helps that there's some board members who serve on multiple boards and keeping that continuity going. Same with the Film Festival, too. I'm curious, though, adding to that partnership, and I know we've asked you this in budget hearings before, and looking to the cities of Galita and I think Carpinteria, have, have you approached them about being part of this partnership? I know the county gives money and we give funding to CDB, and I think San Ynez does also, or somewhere in the Valer, maybe not.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, the San Ynez does not contribute, with the exception of collaborative advertising programs. And we've actually created a very strong cooperative advertising program where they have participated before in the past. We've had ongoing discussions with the city of Galita as well, too.
Okay. Well, I continue, I urge you to continue those discussions. I had one other question. There were some articles in the L.A. Times and other areas, given the massive disasters in Japan and also in New Zealand. Those are two areas where we normally see a lot of tourism and tourists come from those areas, and obviously, there's going to be a big impact of that. Are you able to track that? Do, have you seen any changes lately?
Madam Mayor, certainly, the Japanese market is important to the state of California. Right now, the European market is actually a stronger inbound market for our Santa Barbara hotels as well, too. But certainly, we will feel that impact. I think that, that impact is not known yet. Most of those travelers do come during the summer season, so we will see more of that impact probably later on in months to come as well, too.
It's, it's going to be a long time before I think those countries can...
Right.
At least in Christchurch and New Zealand, but the whole country of Japan, so.
And if I could just comment once more on the collaboration. We recognize that no one can market this community themselves, and it is so critical that all of us, particularly during these tough times, really come together and collaborate as well, too. So, we're really fortunate because we have such strong organizations and partnerships here in town. You had mentioned the Downtown Organization, who really kind of stepped up and, and worked with us on a couple of different campaigns, certainly the Chamber of Commerce. We're working with the Santa Barbara Control, or Santa Barbara Air Pollution Group as well, too, on a car-free program, and also focusing on Earth Day and all of the Earth Day celebrations and promoting green travel to Santa Barbara. We're always happy to work with any organizations because we realize that that's really the key to kind of moving forward in the future.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no action item here, it was just to receive the report, so thank you. We'll move on to item number 19.
Receipt of CalGrip 2010 to 2011 grant funds.
Who is, there we go, Ms. Peterson. Ms. Peterson, whenever you're ready.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Lori Peterson, and I work in the City Administrator's Office. The item before you today is the acceptance of the award for the CalGrip II Grant, which is the California Gang Reduction Intervention and Prevention Grant that's offered through the state, and to increase the revenues and appropriations accordingly for fiscal year In November 2010, the city, in partnership with the Community Action Commission, the Santa Barbara County Education Office, the Santa Barbara Probation Department, and All for One submitted an application with the state to continue our efforts that we started with the CalGrip I Grant that was received in 2008, 2009. And in December of 2010, we received notification that the grant had been awarded to us. We were one of 24 cities to receive funding. Our initial application amount was for $400,000, and we ended up receiving $369,309 for the grant. The second phase of the South Coast CalGrip Project seeks to provide a coordinated regional effort to provide services to 110 youth who are at risk of gang involvement or identified as gang-involved. Through intensive case management, these identified youth will be provided with multi-dimensional support toward the goals of increasing educational outcomes, job skills, addressing their substance abuse issues, and providing their families with skills and support to face their children's behaviors. Youth will also have the opportunity to take part in experiential learning excursions, provide a positive connection with institutions of higher education, and learn valuable life skills from mentors. Some of the grant details are that it's a 24-month grant that started on January 1st of this year. We've been working with the state since the award on submitting all the appropriate information, and we intend to start providing client services on April 1st. And the grant will go through December 31st, 2012. The youth that will be receiving services are located in the South Coast region, so that includes youth in the city of Galita, city of Santa Barbara, city of Carpinteria, and the unincorporated South Coast County as well. Here is the breakdown of the grant amount and the partners. As you can see, the majority of the funds are dedicated to client services through the Community Action Commission for approximately $328,000, and they're providing a match of approximately $173,000. The city's portion of $20,000 in match is for the time to submit the required documentation and reports to report out to the state on the program's objectives. The focus of the grant is to provide services to 110 to 120 participants. Their age range is between 14 and 19, and that includes both males and females. Some of the clients may have gang terms and conditions as part of their probation. They may have been identified by a law enforcement agency and recommended to participate in the program. They also may be at-risk youth who are referred to us from the school district as well, or they may also be self-identified and accepted into the program. The client services that will be provided are client-specific case management, so they will meet with a case manager, they'll be assigned to a case manager who will follow them through. It'll begin with an educational assessment to look at where they are in the education. If they're not credit compliant, figure out how to get them to credit compliance. If they're on their way to graduation but are behind, how do we catch them up, and what kinds of services do they need to get to that point? If they are in need of substance abuse support and counseling, that service will also be offered to those who need it. Skills training through a youth core project, some clients will be able to participate in that. There will also be a component for some of the families who will receive parental guidance and classes, and other additional client services will be offered or referred to other agencies who might provide things that we won't be necessarily in the CalGrip, but can offer things that they need. Plus, we'll, they'll be, some of the clients will receive experiential learning excursions, which will include going to places like USC, Santa Barbara City College, UCSB, and just looking at what those opportunities have for them and what that does for their future. The agency relationships, the city of Santa Barbara will be the grant recipient and administrator. Community Action Commission will lead the grant work and coordinate the case management, the parent education component, and the substance abuse program. So, they'll be running that and making sure that the clients receive the services that they need. The Santa Barbara County Education Office will continue to assist us in this effort with providing educational information, providing guidance on how to get students to credit compliance, and how to get them graduated and on into a successful educational career. And then, the Santa Barbara Probation Department will also be continuing its participation as it did in the original CalGrip by referring clients to the program that they feel would benefit from the services that are particularly being offered in the grant. And that is the conclusion of my presentation.
And All for One is another one.
Yes, I'm sorry. All for One will be providing the educational excursions.
Great, thank you. We do have a public comment, Kate Smith, and then it'll be to the council. Ms. Smith, if you'd like to come up.
Go ahead. Mayor Schneider, members of the Santa Barbara City Council. This is the school-to-prison pipeline, and it is fitting that the money comes in on April Fool's Day. The case manager is a probation officer, and the jail school, El Puente, is the portal through which no child behind is left. The excursion to USC is ironic because the FICMAT report said that children coming into our school district with learning disabilities leave with personality disorders. So, I'd like to talk about the CalGrip Grant from the Office of Emergency Services. The Gang Task Force is a farce, and I demand a federal grand jury to investigate the misappropriation of taxpayer funds. There will be an ACLU-sponsored forum on the school-to-prison pipeline, April 27th, 2011, at the Faulkner Gallery, presenting the agencies and entities who profit from the pipeline. That's the rub. It is an education-political-industrial complex. Three years ago, the same CalGrip Grant from the Office of Emergency Services came to the city council for approval for $800,000 that was to be doled out to the county schools and to probation. I followed the money, and you know, because I presented the evidence at a joint city council-school district meeting, that the money goes into the back pockets of the administrators of those funds so that their retiring, last year's salary is increased, and that boosts their retirement benefits. Don Olson was the administrator, and I followed the dispersal of the 800,000. And on April 22nd, 2009, he told the leadership council, see, the Gang Task Force is...
Need to wind up, please.
Uh, well, I just have one more page.
Then you have, you have just a few sentences, please, if you could wind up, please.
Okay. Don Olson called the youth vector. That's insects, pests, and vermin. And so, the SWAT team said, "That's why we're here. It is nothing but death and destruction for the Hispanic and Black youth. They are incarcerated, making twice the amount of money from their beings."
Thank you very much.
Instead of being educated. Thank you.
Okay, that's my only public commenter. We'll close public comment. Questions and comments from the council, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are these Santa Barbara, either city or county residents that were helping?
I'm sorry, the, the youth?
Yeah.
Yes, the youth live within the city of Galita, the city of Carpinteria, city of Santa Barbara, or the greater incorporated South Coast region and county.
U.S. citizens also?
Uh, yes. I believe so.
We don't know.
I believe so. I can verify that for you. I'll get back to you.
That would be good to know.
I'm seeing nods, and I want to acknowledge Fran Forman and Dr. Gus Freas in the room from Community Action Commission.
Good, thank you very much.
Was that it? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I noticed that we named 110 participants. Do we have a census number on how many kids fall in that? And that is not the entire number of children that were, or people are talking about, though. Is it, isn't it much greater than that, Lori?
Uh, Councilmember Rouse, it is a portion of the population that we strategized originally in the effort. It was 160 that we identified as a core youth that needs services and provide, and so, that's the number that kind of fluctuates over time. So, yes, there is a larger, when you look at the circle, it's the core youth that we're trying to reach, and then there's the greater at-risk, and then the next layer out. So, we're really centered on that.
And in terms of that population, we talked about substance abuse at the, it falls under the Community Action Commission. Do we, how do we identify those people, and what types of treatment are available within that body to, to handle those, those clients?
The case managers would be the ones who would probably refer the clients for services in that area. There will be two programs that are going to be administered. One was a requirement of the grant application. It had to be an evidence-based program, and I believe it's Project Towards Drug Recovery, is the title. And then, there's Bridges to Recovery is the other program, and that one is specifically for Los Prietos Boys Camp participants.
My last question was about the family support, and maybe Dr. Freas can answer this best, but when you identify these youth and/or these, these clients, whatever, how you want to title them, what are the keys to, what are the keys to family support and the need for it? Is it socio-economic? Is it culturally based? How, and what do we do? How do we support people to keep us out of that situation in the first place? Is there a, a good answer for that, Dr. Freas, or is that?
Come on up.
Yeah, would you please? Is that, if you indulge me, Madam Mayor?
Hi, Ms. Dr. Freas. I see Mr. Lopez was very much involved with the grant application, too, but Dr. Freas, welcome.
Thank you for your question. I think that part of the goal is to really connect our kids with mentors that reflect positive norms of behavior, ethical, law-abiding norms of behavior, that they can assist the youth to identify the risk factors impacting him or her at home, at school, in the community, and among peers. Once those risk factors are identified, then the goal is to replace those risk factors with protective factors, and the collaborations kick in with a lot of different agencies. The task force is going to play a role in this. We're going to be supportive, we're going to be working with them. Our goal is to assist them to succeed, but in terms of the family...
You're talking about mentorship, though, that's outside of the family unit itself, though.
But they'll be working with, with the family.
With the family. With the family as well.
Oh, definitely. Now, the family is, is the center here. Matter of fact, the more we think about this, the family really needs to be the focus because the youngster's influenced at home by the, the family environment. And I got to tell you, the Family Crisis Intervention Team concept is a concept that we intend to identify and use and build on, because there are other agencies out there that are doing great work in that field. But when it comes down to addressing the gang-challenging dynamic, oftentimes, that's where the shortcomings come in. So we are going to identify those gaps, and we're going to build on existing strengths. And, and again, our goal is to assist programs like this one to succeed.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Freas, how are you?
Great, thank you. Nice to see you.
Do we have, thank you. Do we have a way of measuring our results?
You know, I, you want to answer that first before I get my-
And I'll also pipe in. I know the county education office has been very much creating a baseline and then monitoring results, especially when it comes to being credit compliant for kids in the probation department, and, and they are, they are doing that quite a bit, and I saw Mr. Lopez nodding his head.
So we can say that we had 140 kids and X number were successful, and these others we've got to work harder with?
Yeah, and I think, Ms. Peterson, did you want to add to that?
Councilmember Hotchkiss and the mayor, yes, we do. We track the data on all the youth who participate in the program, so we'll catch them coming in, we'll know what their credit compliance was at that point, what their baseline issues were, if they had a need for drug support and counseling. And then at the end, we reevaluate with pre, well, there's pre-testing and post-testing, plus we're also tracking the actual data of the number of clients that come in and when they leave credit compliant, or if they're not in credit compliance.
So can we get a, a report on how this has functioned over the last X years, whatever we've had?
Yeah, the 2008, 2009 CalGrip grant is just wrapping up this week, and we plan to return with a report on, on the data on that grant as well.
That would be great, thank you.
And let me add that, because now I'm here, I'm going to be working with them. I've got over 10 years of basically developing the California Gang Intervention Program. A lot of lessons to be learned. At one time, evaluation wasn't even on the agenda at the state level until we voiced the, the concept of evaluation. How do you measure progress? How do you measure change?
Right.
And that's when we identified some process measures and some outcome measures. And outcome measures, just for your info, included a change in the kid's behavior at school, attendance factors, for instance. If a kid at one time was truant, now all of a sudden, we saw a change when the kid started going to school. Behavior, if a kid was misbehaving, now all of a sudden, we saw a change, the kid improving his behavior. Grades, achievement, or the kid at one time was failing school, now all of a sudden, we saw a change. So we've been asking questions related to evaluation, and at one, at one point in the near future, we will definitely present to you respective changes that are making a difference.
Right, and, and thank you for saying that.
Yes.
Sorry?
Go right ahead.
It's important, because if we don't acknowledge our willingness to admit failure in certain instances, we'll never know how to improve to success. So it has to be a frank and forthright, forthright evaluation viewing, et cetera, and, you know, we're putting ourselves in the crosshairs as it were, in order to make it better. Does that make sense?
Definitely. And let me add that if we have a youngster, for instance, that's all tagged down, gang tattoos all over his body and face, well, we're going to have to start, when we get him at the beginning, our goal is to get him at this end of the spectrum where we see change. And hopefully, by the time we get him on this end, he would have gone through a process of leaving the gang behind, beginning with his thinking and behavior, but those tattoos, they got to go. So we got to get the kid into understanding that that nonsense is going to have to be addressed at some point in the continuum of change. And again, it's, sometimes it's difficult work, but we're, with our collaborations, with the different strengths, different work that's out there in this county, we're going to make a tremendous difference with these youth.
You sound like a tough guy, that's great. Does this have any crossover with our, the gang injunction that we're trying to, or we are in the act of putting in place now? These, these kids are younger, I think, than the gang injunction folks, who are by and large 18 and over.
I take it back to the comment of the family. When we have a kid who has an injunction, who's part of a list, he's going to live in a home, and in that home, there's a family. And I think ultimately, our goal is to provide services to that family that's being impacted by that individual. So again, a comprehensive approach would look at suppression, which is the injunction, as well as intervention, and prevention. If there are little children in that home, or if that individual has a son, can you imagine this, walking down the street with his son, and then he's picked up? What happens to the son? That's where prevention, intervention kick in. So that's why ultimately, our goal is to make sure that our efforts are comprehensive. Prevention, intervention, suppression working together.
We could talk about this for hours, but best of luck in your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Freas. And just to be clear, the 30 individuals that are named in the proposed injunction, there are no juveniles in there, they're all adults. Mr. House, public comments closed.
I want to say that-
Ms. Smith, you're, you've had your three minutes, you can sit down.
I would like to mention, I would like to men-
You had your three, I actually gave you three minutes, like you asked, so your public comment is closed, it's to the council, thank you.
But you're on notice, because there are laws coming down the pipe that are diametrically opposed to what's being said here.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith, it's to the council. Ms. Smith, you're disrupting this, thank you. Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate Mr. Hotchkiss's questions, and I think he's really, really touched on something very important, and Dr. Freas, thank you for the comprehensiveness in your answer. I really appreciate this approach, the, looking at not just the individual child or, or individual, but the family. And the family element, that is critical for the success of this, and then the fact that we can literally get to know that situation well enough that we can report back on their success, and of course, their success is our goal. You mentioned the prevention, intervention, and enforcement, the three pieces of this, three legs to the stool, and this seems to fit just perfectly in the intervention part for those young people, particularly at the center, as Ms. Peterson is saying, a center of our concern. But the prevention piece is critical, too, for their siblings, especially their younger siblings, and for their cousins, and for their friends. And so I feel very strongly that this is on the right path, and this is definitely a complement to the other parts of our approach that we're talking about with the enforcement piece. I'm going to step right out and move that we authorize a receipt of the CalGrip grant funds, as we have here in our staff report, items A and B.
Second.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I wanted to make a, a comment. Certainly, I'm supporting the motion and appreciate staff's work for competing successfully for, for this grant. Well done. As I've now entered my sophomore year as a councilperson, I've learned, and added to my years of, of just being a citizen here, I've learned about the, the host of programs that we have that are very much, very predominantly privately funded and managed, but obviously the partnerships are everywhere. And it's, and I'm hearing a rationalization, a sort of making, pulling the pieces together into integrated strategies, both, both with Cal, the CalGrip, with Dr. Freas, with hiring Dr. Freas, and with that whole gang intervention effort. However, I, I still think that as a, as a community, we don't see the diagram, the flow chart, the, the, the host of, of programs that are going on here. I'm thinking even of the, of the preschool activities as an example that we know are so critical to all this, and then build up into the, what we're talking about with, with the people, with the gang injunction, all to that sort of bad-case scenario. But I do think going forward, our citizens would appreciate seeing that crazy diagram that's going to be the full quilt of activities. And we're seeing critical pieces of it today, and, and the real strategic approach, but as we go forward, always that, sharing that information gives everybody the chance to, to first of all, support and appreciate what's going on, and see where their money is being invested. And I think Mr. Hotchkiss was kind of getting at that, performance basis is critical to all of this as well. So thank you for letting me have a minute on this.
Sure. Well, I also just want to publicly thank Marcelo Lopez, because it was, he was the one behind putting the grant together, along with a lot of other people, but you were the glue. And, and I also see Fran Forman from CAC, and to thank All For One and Community Action Commission, the County Education Office, and Probation Department. It's just another example of how you have all these different agencies focusing on the same thing, and it's when you coordinate those, those programs, then we become successful, and especially when we have the data to prove it and set a benchmark, and then see where the progress is. So I look forward to the report that's going to come out in, soon, about the first round. I will say, Mr. Lopez and I, along with Chief Sanchez, we went down to Los Angeles back in December when we heard we got this grant. We didn't know we would get it, because it was the second time around for us, and actually it was pretty competitive. There were only 24 cities in the whole state that got this, this funding, and the $369,309 was the top amount you could get, with the exception of the City of Los Angeles that had a separate line item status of $1 million for, for the program. So we went down and met with police chiefs, and sheriffs, and mayors from all over the state, and Governor Schwarzenegger at the time, who had a press conference and to announce the grant recipients. And so, you know, we're not alone in this issue, but I think with, you know, the information we have and the great partners we have, we think we can make some really good progress. And really, at the end of the day, it's about keeping our kids safe, and it's about keeping our community safe. So I appreciate everyone involved in making this work. Mr. House?
Just briefly, something that Mr. White said, and you amplified, that I think really needs to be said out loud. The Head Start Program under the care of the Community Action Commission, the, the youth services, not to mention, of course, the huge constellation, if you will, of support services that are here, but starting at that, that early, the early, early preschool, you know, level, that's where the difference is made. I mean, if we're looking to the future, and that's ongoing now, it, it comes under attack in Washington from time to time. So I just raise this up as a, a warning flag to the community who would maybe have an interest in, in sharing the value and the importance of those, those programs, because that is prevention at its very heart, and it is part of this continuum that Dr. Freas and, and all of us here recognize and appreciate. But thank you very much, Fran, and for the work that you're doing in community action.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, and we have a second.
...suicide within four months.
Ms. Kate, Ms. Smith, you need to not yell in council chambers. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes, thank you.
...suicide within four months in Santa Barbara.
Okay, we'll move on to item 20.
Overview of the city's tsunami preparedness efforts.
Chief Dimizio, and I see Mr. Harris in the back from the county. Welcome, and I'm glad you're here, so, Chief Dimizio.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon. Fire Chief Andy Dimizio here today, along with Fire Marshal Joe Porey, to give you an overview of efforts made to date on the city's effort to mitigate the effects of a tsunami, and in turn, reach National Weather Service designation as a tsunami-ready community. Also here today, as you mentioned, County OES Director Michael Harris and our Waterfront Director John Brightley are here. They're not scheduled to speak, however, they're available for questions if needed. As we know, tsunamis are an uncommon but deadly natural phenomenon that threaten our coastal community. The heartbreaking loss of life from the recent earthquake and tsunami in Japan reflect the catastrophic damage that these unexpected disasters can cause, and we keep those who are so deeply affected in our thoughts and prayers. Efficient warning systems and awareness in our city are vital to mitigating these intense natural disasters. To that end, the City of Santa Barbara's Fire Department Office of Emergency Services is committed towards working with our partners at the national, state, and county operational area levels. Working together, we can minimize the impacts of tsunamis through hazard assessment, evacuation planning, and educational outreach. While the danger of tsunamis cannot be eliminated, these efforts can help save lives by equipping our community to effectively respond to emergency situations. I'd like now have Joe, Joe Porey, our Fire Marshal, lead us through a brief presentation. I'd like to apologize ahead of time, it's not nearly as dynamic as the CVB presentation or Dr. Freas. I, I feel a little bit like I was in high school, and I always wanted to go first because of this, but, thank you, Joe.
They do marketing for a living, okay, so it's okay, it's all right.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I'd also like to recognize that the bulk of the work in our tsunami preparedness and getting us ready as a tsunami-ready city is done by our own OES Director Yolanda McGlinchey, who can't be here today, and who helped us with this presentation. And I'll try to be brief. Basically, the, the history of tsunami readiness in Santa Barbara goes back to our earthquake history, as has been illustrated in a recent incident in Japan. There have been about eight reported tsunamis to hit the Santa Barbara area historically, and in the last year, there have been two incidents that have caused tidal reactions with little damage. The last moderate earthquake in 1978 actually did not generate a tsunami at all, but the potential is always there. Tsunamis are caused not only by earthquakes, but also by undersea landslides and such. Both the Chilean and the Japanese earthquakes did affect the local coast to a degree, even though the, the actual tidal action was fairly minimal. We have redrawn the inundation map. I don't know if many of you remember the old tsunami inundation map, but it went quite a ways up towards, even in this neighborhood. And recent data, more accurate data in being able to calculate these things was done by the USC Geological Department, and the current inundation map looks like this. And as you can see, it basically goes as far as the freeway, and a little bit beyond over in the Bird Refuge area and in the Lower East Side, but generally, it stops at the freeway. And it, that is our new tsunami zone. That's the zone that we, that is affected by what we're trying to accomplish here. And basically, this is based on a nine-meter tsunami. That's going to be about 30 feet. And then just for reference, the Japanese tsunami was a 10-meter, about 32 feet. Since 2007, the Office of Emergency Services has been involved in this project of getting a tsunami-ready, and we started out doing that by becoming storm-ready. We became a storm-ready community through the Office of Emergency Services. And we do this in conjunction with other departments and other organizations that you see listed here. The planning group, in, two years ago, we had a tabletop exercise, and that led us to a practical exercise, a functional exercise, some of you may have been involved in, and that in turn led us to this plan. This is the draft plan from both exercises. We came up with a tsunami response plan for the City of Santa Barbara. Now, it's important to note that basically, the city emergency operations plan is the overriding function here. The tsunami plan is basically a fill-the-gap type of, of operation that, that functions more from the notification that a tsunami may occur to when we decide it's credible or not credible, and then the, the city emergency plan kicks in. Basically, what you have is in the plan are tsunami classifications, special situations, tsunami bulletins, general assumptions about tsunamis, concept of operations from a city point of view, deactivation of a tsunami warning or watch, command and control, the proposed evacuation routes, traffic control points, roles and responsibilities, the initial operations phases and references. The draft plan is currently on the city SharePoint site, and when it's finalized, it will be released to the public. So in August 2009, we were designated as a storm-ready city, and it's the first step to get to tsunami-ready, and it's from the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, or NOAA. And we are very close to becoming designated as tsunami-ready, and you've probably seen the recent county release. So the current actions that we have to do, we have a public education component, CERT, community presentations, et cetera. We have meetings for stakeholders, particularly in the inundation zone, and then the warning signs in the inundation area. You can see an example of a warning sign on the lower right. There are also signs that we have available for you to look at that, not here today, but on, on the presentation, that indicate evacuation routes through the inundation zone. And the evacuation routes are generally the ones that you would expect to see, the, the ones that actually traverse the freeway, Castillo Street, for example. And part of the, the sign study, this- And part of the sign study, this is some of the places where the potential signs will be placed. You can see the evacuation routes in yellow and then the initial study of the sign placement in the dots that you see on the inundation zone. The final sign placement still has yet to be decided. So our next steps are sign committee approval, and we've already been in touch with sign committee, community meetings. We have one scheduled for April 7th. Public education, the final decision on the sign locations, and the press release. As we all know, it's not if, but when. And here's an information number for more information for people to contact us if they have any questions. And that's our presentation, so I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Great. We do have one public comment or any questions first from the council. Do you question Mr. House or did you have a comment? Question? Want to wait? Okay, Mr. House then?
Why don't we go to public comment?
We just have one. So Mr. Bard, if you'd like to come on up, and we can get questions and comments afterward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, my name is Jeffrey Bard. Regarding roles and responsibilities, I am an advisory committee, and I do work with certain vulnerable populations. And for the past couple of years, I've been educating these populations and minimizing their environmental impact and disaster readiness. And I've been in contact with American Red Cross, where I have multiple certifications in disaster response and my EMS training. And I have been a voice for paying better attention to these particular populations. Regarding today's agenda item, I got to say it's great to be an American because the virtue of Japan is courtesy and civility and there's no looting. But there's no information coming out of their emergency responders whatsoever. The Prime Minister of Japan doesn't know what's going on. And we need Greg Jasco, who is our director here of the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, has to correct the Japanese authorities regarding the safety and well-being of Americans. It is great to be an American because every American citizen is called by actually the Second Amendment and others to be ready for emergencies. And it's not about going up to the range, it's about being ready, knowing your first aid. Get your EMS and be ready to respond in an emergency, be it a civic emergency, criminal intrusion emergency, an industrial accident emergency, or a tsunami. Readiness. And I have to compliment our, over at the firehouse, I learned about the emerging resilience model from our OES people. And I just want to caution that one of the problems we'll have if there's a tsunami is there are a lot of panic monitoring up in SLO. Frankly, it's coming from the Green Party people, and they're making a big deal. Diablo Canyon Power Plant will not present a radiologic hazard unless there's a tsunami three times bigger than the biggest known tsunami of all time. It won't be a problem. There may be a problem from songs, but we're far enough away, we don't have to worry about songs. So the important thing is to be ready for all this panic traffic jamming 101 and basically try to work on the other counties so that we don't get a big influx of panicked drivers coming from SLO County. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Now, Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you mind putting the egress map back up, please? Thank you. So my concern was because especially in higher tourist times, we have a high concentration of folks in hotels along the waterfront at any given time. And from time to time, we talk about modifications. We talk about, for example, an area of State Street during the potential Los Intronas, which I don't know what that project is. But my concern would be getting people off the beach because that's where the bulk of the population is going to be in one of those situations. And if we have impediments to traffic or if we don't coordinate, for example, with Amtrak and the railway signals, I don't know if there's a plan for that kind of coordination, but also is there consideration to the streets themselves as we either develop or plan for impediments to traffic or circulation in those areas? Because that's a, I hadn't really thought about that before, but as the tsunami came, that if we take State Street down to one lane each way, is that really the best way to be in preparedness for a situation like this? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, yes, there is a transportation part in this in terms of the evacuation routes, and it's in the tsunami plan itself. And it was part of the exercise in which some of the streets were actually turned both ways outbound. We wanted to have many different evacuation routes as possible. And just in case, say, an overpass was down due to earthquake, so there's multiple routes out here. And of course, the main thing is to seek high ground and get out of the inundation area.
So has the actual plans about State Street, has that been part of the discussion at all? Because the configuration would change if it went forward as it was laid out in the last iteration.
Yes, it would be the purview of the law enforcement to make that happen in terms of evacuation. That's where that responsibility goes. And like I say, that was part of the plan. And it's been exercised. However, the reality of making it happen, we haven't done that because we haven't had that situation happen.
I know from our last experience living on the mesa when we had a tsunami warning, it actually gathered a number of people on the cliffs at shoreline. I think the entire town was down there, so, because I couldn't even get out of my own neighborhood.
Ms. Self?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I get a copy of that map that I can read? This is kind of faded, and so if I could get one, you can email it to me.
At this moment.
And then it sounds like we're getting 150 signs for the county. How many are we determined to need here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, I can't remember the exact figure, but I think it's around 30. And there are different types of signs. Some of the signs are evacuation route signs. Some of the signs are like the ones we showed you that indicate that you are in an evacuation zone. And other signs are similar to what you were just referring to in that they are placed up on Shoreline Park, for example, to indicate you are now in an evacuation safe area from a tsunami. So there are different types of signs, but I think our number is 30. I'll check on that.
Oh, goodie. I was hoping the one I saw in the picture wasn't what we had to post all over. Up in Oregon and Washington, they have the evacuation signs, and they're no bigger than our 90-minute parking sign. They'll have evacuation route and an arrow, and they're very, they aren't as, they don't scream as loud, but they are, you're still aware of it. It's not just a tiny dot either. Okay, well, I'm glad to hear we have some say in that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self.
Chief Dimizio.
My records indicate that we're due for six small, 18 larger signs, 10 entry, 10 exit evacuation-type signs. And from what we've heard, the challenge is actually to keep the signs in place because they're a collectible type.
Dorm rooms everywhere.
Something to that end, so we'll have to make sure that they're securely fast.
Sorry, I didn't mean to bash on students. Could be, right. Was that it for Ms. Self?
Yeah. I was just saying they could be electrified.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Porey, as you pointed out, this current inundation map is radically different than the one we had previously. Was the only changed assumption the height of the tidal surge?
In my understanding, and I'm not an expert on inundation zones, but my understanding is that the old data was based on old technology and a lot of anecdotal evidence about the 1812 earthquake.
Okay.
That turned out to be pretty much incorrect.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. House?
That's where I turn my interest here. Watching the videos of what happened in Japan and seeing how the structures and other physical elements and landscape didn't seem to stop that much until they came to large embankments of freeway over crossings and things like that. It's hard for me not to imagine that the West Beach neighborhood wouldn't be just totally inundated, that the, I mean, it almost seems to me like the freeway itself is the dam that we have to protect, or the seawall performs that function except for at the under crossings. And this map doesn't ring true to me at all. I mean, if you're saying nine-meter, that's, you know, 26 feet, 27, 28 feet, right? Wall of water. This doesn't make any sense, what I'm seeing on the screen. And in terms of the placement of the signs, it would seem like in the neighborhoods and the areas where you have lots of these, both bed and breakfasts and multifamily units in the West Beach area, for instance, they in particular would be at risk, at least up into the freeway. And I just challenge what we're seeing right here. It doesn't, just really, unless there's some other features that I'm missing, didn't seem like even built structures were, they just floated away or got tipped over or demolished in the force of the water. So what am I missing here? Practically, just on its face, it seems like it doesn't represent reality.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, what we've tried to capture here are entry points into this area below the freeway. So the main signage, also the dots that you see there, that's not locked in stone right now.
Okay.
So we're still evaluating the best place to put the signs, and we are trying to capture that entire area as tsunami inundation area to let people know that they're going into or they're leaving that area.
I mean, the pink is supposed to indicate the inundation areas, right, on that map? Am I reading it right?
That's correct. And that is the new map as of 2009.
If you look up, I mean, think of Rancheria and the Wentworth area in the Lower West Side. I mean, that would seem to me just as vulnerable as anything else, given the kind of event that we saw in Japan. Of course, that may be so far-fetched that we couldn't imagine it here in Santa Barbara, but I'm sure they didn't imagine it either.
Well, and they also speak to that, the Channel Islands are really no protection for us. They can't guarantee that they're protection or anything. I don't think they're predicting that we'll have a lesser tsunami necessarily. I think that a lot of different types of data go into this. And like I say, I'm not a tsunami expert. All I know is that this is the current working map. And it's part of a larger map. You know, the tsunami inundation zone goes throughout the county.
Who generated the map for us?
I believe it was the USC Geological Department that generated most of the data that's being used.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put it up there for us to consider, to challenge it. I just, I think that there may be other reasons for which we would want to have a really accurate representation. If we look, we got that great big mural on the wall over here, this picture that's a little bit dated, but, I mean, there's nothing, there's no hills, there's no rises, there's, I mean, Burton Mound barely, you know, rises enough. But that whole area across there, just, again, just looking at it through the lens of what we saw in Japan, I just, it just makes me think that this, it's inaccurate somehow. So my challenge, but thank you.
Thank you for that. Your observations are interesting, and, you know, maybe there's something to it. We'll look into that.
Mr. Armstrong?
I might ask Mr. Harris, I know he's worked on this on a county-wide basis, and he may have some more information about how the map was developed.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Harris.
My pleasure, Madam Mayor. And thank you to your staff and to the council for this opportunity. Regarding the heights, we'll certainly have discussions. What occurred a couple of years ago is USC, California Emergency Management Agency, and our staff did a site survey up along the coast. The predominant changes that occurred was, as staff said, was technology and a better understanding of tsunami behavior. And what I continually state with people is when we look at the Japanese scenario, that we have to understand that, first of all, the topography. We could see a very, very large, flat area that, in some cases, the inundation, I think, was six miles and even further than that. Second is the offshore topography that we obviously don't see. And when you looked at the Indonesian tsunami, you could see a clear area where people, when the water receded, clearly moved out into the water and were able to walk out a great distance before the tsunami hit them. Here, I think we all appreciate that it's going to be a pretty steep drop-off, so you're much more likely to get different tsunami behavior. What I'll do for you, Mr. House, is I'll speak with our program manager on this, Jay McCallis, who's been working with Yolanda, and we'll just, we'll sort of present your questions. I have absolutely no problems with always challenging assumptions. And we'll just continually validate this. And I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, I just put it out there that in, you know, two or five years, if the science continually gets better, we understand some of the behavior of the fault lines here off our coast and also the differences between here and the Oregon coast, which are significantly different. Again, what's the best science at that time? I think we all recognize the large and the depth that was the original projections. This comes back and appears to be fairly minimal. The chief and his staff and Ms. McGlinchey have always been, I think, a little bit more cautious to talk about, as the chief mentioned, above that 101 barrier and just get everybody above that. That allows the emergency responders to stage appropriately above 101, again, anticipating some type of tsunami activity. So certainly, Mr. House, on your behalf and that of the council, we'll certainly challenge and ask for clarification.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
My pleasure. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I sort of wondered about Allen Road, sort of that spot as well, basically that low area. Clearly, the beach there is at risk, and it's unincorporated for, the county gets to handle the Hendrys, but obviously above it is the city. I was trying to picture what we're, what are the risks here? And the islands, obviously, are our protector from an intermediate distance and far-distance tsunami. We saw the effects come in. It was really quite something. I only saw the videos of it. I didn't, I was not one of those that raced down to the waterfront to watch the bait barge wreak havoc, but obviously, the surge was impressive. But what I would think to be the scariest risk would be an earthquake between here and the islands. And just that that's the, that's the one where there would be X number of minutes, and again, I don't know what that number is, but that'd be interesting to know, warning. I mean, it would be very, very, short warning, in other words. And therefore, and then what? And signs? Having done, gone to school in Hawaii, what you see in Hawaii is, and this was now, you know, 40 years ago or whatever, 40-plus years ago, there were sirens placed strategically because they do have very low-lying areas there. And is that something that enters the equation? I mean, as opposed to a sign, particularly for the short notice, for the hour or a half-hour or less notice? Does that enter into the equation here? Do we expect the fire engines to go down there and set up? And how does that, how does that change over, occur from a sign to a real alert?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, sirens are a component that can be utilized. In fact, maybe if Waterfront Director Brightley is here, he can address that sirens have been evaluated and are being considered, actually. And there's, the more forms of emergency communication that we have, the better. So certainly sirens are one way to do that. Reverse 911 is another way to do that. I know that the harbor has a template built in for reverse 911 of communicating with all the people that live in that area and are down in that area. So signs are another one. Just to get the public to realize that if they feel an earthquake and it lasts for more than 30 seconds, that they should start moving right away without even communicating. So there's a lot of different forms of communication that can be used.
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember White, the point, that point is also well-taken. One of the assumptions that our tsunami plan has is that a large population of our beachfront on any given day could be tourists, many of whom may or may not know much about earthquakes or tsunamis. And they may be just dusting themselves off from the earthquake, not realizing that they need to get out of the area. And, but the one point I want to make about the sirens is that as far as the tsunami-ready community designation goes, they're not a required component, but they can be considered after the, or as part of the package, either way.
And any comment, or will there be, when the tsunami readiness fleshes out, a comment about the prospect of, is there significant, I expect there's a significant, I mean, not a large likelihood, but there is a possibility of a quake in the channel and at the channel that would be the tsunami-creating event. Is there, would there be any allusion to that along the way?
Mr. Harris?
I also defer to the chief, Mr. White. I think one of the things that we're trying to underscore is the signs, and Mr. McCallis says this often to people, the signs are an education tool. People that, our residents who live in any type of low-lying, at-risk area should have one simple rule. A very large earthquake, and keep in mind that the Japanese earthquake was about, from all accounts, about three minutes long. We're talking about an earthquake that's 40, 50 seconds or more that you really can't stand up or that you're having a hard time maintaining any type of balance, given the fact that you should be underneath your desk anyway. But that- But that, that's a sign, that's a type of earthquake. And what the chief alluded to was, the people that live in these areas should just have one simple rule. Go up, get out of the area. Working with, I think the reverse 911 is one tool, and I believe that, I'll confirm with my staff, that, that executable area is already programmed and ready to go upon a request of our office. And so on a local event, that's clearly the one where people just have to understand. A major earthquake, local earthquake, regardless of ideology, channel or outside the channel or right onshore, you move away from the water as quickly as can be determined. People will get frustrated, I can tell you that right now, because tsunamis often happen in multiple waves. But as soon as we can determine that it's safe, we will communicate. And to the extent that we're still waiting for it to be safe, we'll communicate that and say, we're just not totally sure yet. The departments have been well, well-versed and have gone through this, and we're, you know, we're very happy with the city and their staff, in the sense of that's got to be the message. To the extent that what Joe was saying is, the local people down there that aren't, you know, from Iowa, and they're just not used to this, that's trying to give them a clue and a, and sort of a reminder to everyone, when that event happens, you move away.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the best clue they're going to get is when the sirens, which I think absolutely have to be a part of this, go off, and every local guy goes, you know, they're going to understand right away something's going on. And I don't get putting tsunami warning area signs down there at all. I mean, duh, if you're down by the beach, no kidding. So I think the money would be a lot better spent elsewhere. And, and sirens, if they are optional, I don't think so. I mean, I could just imagine the press coverage we would get after a disastrous thing, when we had a huge tidal wave, and somebody said, well, what, you know, how fast did the sirens go off? We said, well, they weren't part of our plan. We're going to look like fools.
Or, Mr. Hotchkiss, excuse me, but also, one of the counteresses to that is in Japan, where the sirens failed, because it's a 9.0 earthquake. They fail, and then people don't respond, because their siren didn't go off. So again, it's the core, it's the core education component.
But signage is just not going to make it. I mean, we got to at least try, and we have backup systems, I believe, but sirens have definitely got to be a part of this deal.
Mr. Rous, did you have another comment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to agree with Councilmember House. I, you know, as long, if we're looking at this as a plan, or we're looking at these as possibilities, and I'm not trying to raise the specter of a possibility, but if you're talking about a nine-meter tsunami, and you just look at the topographical map, that that really does not ring true. I have to agree with, with, with Mr. House. In addition to that, what I really would like to see would be what Chief DiMizio referred to as, as the traffic plan, as the emergency plan. I'd kind of like to see that sketched out. I'd love to see it exercised, say, after the Fourth of July fireworks, and just see how well it works in a non-emergency situation, because I know what it's like trying to egress from the beach when there's a ton of people, and everybody's out on the waterfront, or doing, it's almost impossible to get off the beach sometimes. And if we have a situation and an emergency down there, you know, the 101 becomes virtually worthless right away. We've all discovered that during wildfires. But a traffic circulation, emergency plan, corridor between the county sheriff, the local PD, and our fire department, I think, is essential. I would love to see that kind of plan with traffic capacities and abilities to move traffic in one way at a rapid pace. I think that would be essential to this kind of plan, and give us more of a comfort zone. But once again, I, I don't know how valuable this is, but I would love to see that flood zone revisited, because that, that, in that event, that just, you know, like, like Mr. House said, I just, I don't, I'm not getting that one. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, if we just relied on sirens or something happening after the earthquake, we're all in trouble. I think the whole point of this is to be prepared and know ahead of time what we're supposed to do when you feel something as violent as an earthquake, like the one you described. One of the things, watching the Japan earthquake and tsunami as a reminder, and also it happened off of Phuket in Thailand a number of years ago, the Indonesia one, and as you mentioned, Mr. Harris, was, it was, it's not just one wave. It's a series of waves. And, and just when you think you're okay because the tsunami came in, and it went out, and you think you're done, when in fact, no, there might be second, or third, or even fourth surges coming in, and that sense of, that false sense of security. And so part of that being the education component to this, I think we're all learning a lot in the last month because of, you know, watching footage from international TV, but how that then relates to us at home, and what the plan is if you are home, or if it's the middle of the night, or if you're, if your kid's at school and you're at work, and what the, you know, how do you make sure you, you get in touch with each other? So I know that's all part of this process. You've heard a lot of comments and questions, and I'm sure you'll be back with extra information for us, and I appreciate that. But I do appreciate having this here to us today. It's timely, and I know you've been working on it for several months. It wasn't just because there was a massive earthquake and tsunami. It was in the works for a while. And I also appreciate that this is not just a city of Santa Barbara thing, because that doesn't make any sense, that we're looking regionally here. So I believe the cities of Galida and Carpinteria and the county are also going to get presentations on this. Is that correct? Okay. I don't believe there's anything to approve right here. We're just getting the report. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, well, thank you very much. Mr., Chief DiMizio.
Madam Mayor, one additional comment regarding the signage. The signs were available free to the city, so there's no cost to the city, from Cal EMA through our partners at our local operational area.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Harris, for being here. Any council member committee assignment reports? I'll just let people know the state of the city. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for co-sponsoring that. That will be tomorrow morning, and soon after. The whole thing will be on the city website. So if you're not at the meeting, there's a lot of good information about what's going on in the city. So we have a closed session. If you'd like to read that off.
Item 21, conference with labor negotiator.
Okay. And we'll adjourn from closed session. Thank you very much. This meeting will go to closed session.